Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen's March 12th, 2020 meeting. We open with public comments, so are there any public comments this evening? Not as part of the... Okay? You need to identify yourself.
Hi, Steve Kreskal, Board of Health. This evening, the Dover Board of Health in conjunction with the Sherborne Board of Health has given guidance to Andrew Keough and the Dover school systems that they should close their schools as of this evening. There will not be school tomorrow. They have been asked to close for two weeks, and the revaluation as to when they open will occur next week.
Same thing for private schools.
The private schools are in the midst of being notified that are within our town, as well as Sherborne. Not all of them have been reached yet, including the preschools and the religious schools.
So if people did not hear that, the Board of Health just informed the Board of Selectmen that in conversation with Sherborne Board of Health, as well as with conversations with the school administration, a decision has been made to close all schools effective immediately. The closures will start tomorrow.
Correct.
And go through for two weeks. The Board of Health, along with the school administration, will evaluate that next week to determine how long the closure may be. It's not just the public schools. This is private schools in town, including preschools.
And religious schools.
And religious schools.
Thank you.
All right.
Jerry, anything on staff?
I'm sorry, please?
Anything else to add to that?
To that? No, I mean, we've had...
Okay, Mr. ... So that will close the open session, and we're going to move forward with item 1.1 on our agenda. As everybody in this town knows, and the nation is embracing for COVID-19, and this evening, we asked the Board of Health to attend this meeting to talk to us about the actions that they have taken with respect to COVID-19. We already heard about the schools. I also asked the emergency management, the chief of police, the COA, Park and Rec to also attend this meeting so we can talk about the town's preparedness. But right now, I'm going to turn it over to you, Mr. Clark.
Well, very quickly, in answer to your specific question, the two Boards of Health, Sherborne and Dover, some weeks ago, after having worked on specific issues together in great accord, came together and have been meeting regularly in conjunction with one another with attendance, and worked on the matter of coming up with a protocol that could advise the schools on determination of the level of illness and the determination to seclude an individual, to isolate an individual. That's all been worked out. It's been provided to the superintendent. It has been developed by the various physicians on the Boards of Health. The preschools have been notified. We'll be meeting with them tomorrow morning at 9:00. We've had multiple meetings with the two councils on aging on the similar matter. So we have been working to ensure that all of the appropriate populations are aware. We have not been using social media for fear that the trolls will be posting. We urge people to go to the official websites of the Massachusetts Department of Health and the Centers for Disease Control for the most up-to-date information. So that's in summary. Certainly, if you have specific questions, we had a meeting this afternoon with the town administrator, with the fire chief, the police chief, the EMS administrator, and the intent is to continue meetings, excuse me, and a member of the Board of Selectmen to meet at least twice a week to ensure coordination. We are developing a calendar of regular meetings, which is looking more and more dense as the day goes on. We have developed a call list with all of the appropriate people. I can't go into any specific medical details. I've seen postings everywhere saying, "Well, how many people and where and such?" That's not public information.
You've talked to the churches as well, yes?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And we've all contacted the church. We intend to meet with the four churches in Dover, but we've also now, just tonight, I've received the contact information for the churches in Sherborne. And I'm very seriously intending that the two towns maintain a coordinated effort, a same face to the extent possible.
So, you know, first of all, we'd like to thank the Board of Health for your efforts. I also want to make sure that citizens of Dover recognize that this is a very fluid situation for all of us. We are committed to updating our website regularly with all current information that we have. On the front page of the website, a posting went up. The town administrator and the Board of Selectmen staff will be updating that. We also have official Town of Dover Facebook pages and Twitter accounts, and the same information will be sent out. Whatever we get in, we have coordinated efforts with the Board of Health. We also have coordinated information with the schools to make sure that the Town of Dover gets the same information that school parents get. All of the information posted to school parents is also on the Town of Dover's website. So we really are encouraging residents to go to the website. I would like to ask each of the heads here to just talk about and let the towns know, right, of their preparedness to work with us, the Board of Health, and the citizens of Dover in connection with this very fluid COVID-19 situation. I think it's important for town residents to know that our emergency services have been planning for this for weeks now, and so they should have comfort in that. So I will start with you, Chief McGowan, and then turn it over to the EMS.
Thank you. The police department, the fire department, the EMS have been coordinating for close to a month now, being prepared for this.
Emergency.
Emergency. Thank you. That's the word I was looking for. We're taking every precaution, every step to make sure that both our employees are safe and protected, as well as any patients that we have to interact with in any type of distress, whether it be flu-like symptoms or anything else. We're treating everybody the same. We are using all recommended personal protective equipment and making sure that the facility is kept clean to make sure that we're not contributing to any of the stress.
Thank you.
Chief Hughes?
Yes, I don't know, Chris, have you handed those to them yet? I updated you myself and Tim, as you know, the EMS administrator. And just where we're at as far as fire department and EMS services, we've done well prepared for this now, like Chief McGowan said, a little over a month, if we're fair about it. But there's just some, just showing you what we do, and we're well prepared. People have been trained and so forth. We have plenty of supplies right now to treat patients on a one-on-one basis. Chief McGowan booked us up with the Sheriff's Department, AKO, and interfluoring spray of the station. He handled once the weight room and so forth at the station today, just as a precaution with staff. But I just wanted to address that Sean, that the Chancellor of Health and everybody and staff who's very well, Tim has done an admirable job, he put in time and so forth.
So I think we should let citizens know that you appointed Tim to head up this effort for the EMTs.
Sure.
So do you have anything to add, Tim?
No, I mean, I think, as Craig said, we've been talking about this since January. We've done a couple of training sessions, and the key thing for us is we count on the police to do our dispatching, so we've done a lot of work to make sure that we know the questions to ask to get the right kind of response and then be able to have the right people there. And as you all know, we get support for paramedics, which would be advanced life support, from other towns, so we're also coordinating with the other towns to make sure that our protocols knit together. But so far, so good. It's all working well.
Thank you. We also have Park and Rec here and COA. Do either of you want to talk about the efforts you're doing in your departments to reach out to the community?
Yeah, so we've kind of updated the community as we can. We rely on Board of Health a lot. You know, we're trying to get as much information as we can, but we haven't got a lot. So we are doing the best we can. We're using the state's website, any information on the town website to pass to our residents. I will say, we have received lots of questions, programs, and, you know, what we're doing in the coming days, weeks. That decision hasn't been made until, you know, we're waiting for Board of Health to make, give some guidance for that. So that's where we are currently. In terms of programs being run right now, we're using cleaning practices in terms of equipment. After every class, we're cleaning equipment with vendors that are using, that are here in the county communities now. That's what we're doing right now.
But my understanding, is this right, that all programs are to shut down effective Friday?
The schools.
Just the schools? Okay.
I was just...
Okay. Janet, would you?
Sure. The Council on Aging has been collaborating and giving the more help as well as public safety representatives here and the town administrator, and talking about what's going to happen as we move into dealing more and more with this virus. As you all are probably aware, older adults, people 60 years and older, as well as any person dealing with a chronic health condition, is at a higher risk of being, if they're exposed, of being infected with this virus. So we are trying to be sure that we're educating people about that and talking with them about the CDC recommendations and the Board of Health recommendations on how to take care of themselves so that they remain safe and healthy. As I hear that the schools are being closed, we've been starting to cancel some of our programs this month, especially larger groups and some that are having closer contact luncheons and things like that. And as I talked with our chair of our board today and the town administrator, I think that at this point, it's probably a smart idea for the COA to suspend our programs at this time, because that way the staff can focus on our outreach and our communications with our elders at risk and develop the resources that they need. We've been preparing for this for a while. We've been visiting people. We've been talking with them and trying to connect them with the resources that they need, so that this is not a frightening thing for them and that they can have the resources that they need.
Janet, to the best of your knowledge, is there anybody in the community, in your specific community, that's been affected by it?
Not that I'm aware of. I know that they are, there are some people that we have encouraged, "Please do not come into the center. Please do not come to a program," because we know they have chronic health issues and that they're at greater risk than even some of our other seniors. So we're trying to get into their homes. Our outreach worker has been working more hours than usual of getting out there and checking on people and making sure they're connected. We've talked to a lot of people who have medical conditions and also some medical treatments coming up and how they should handle that. People have said, "Should I stop going to the doctor?" Like, no, but kind of helping to decrease the fear of it's happening, still stay connected.
Well, extend our thanks to the people who've been putting in the extra hours and is greatly appreciated, and sharing.
We've got to change.
Well, I think thanks goes to everyone here for this coordinated effort. And now, in a moment of chaos, the Board of Health has a new appointment that they'd like to make?
Well, there are four items I'd like to cover with you, and in the process, ask for three motions to be approved.
Jerry, before you do that, can I ask you guys just to tell people what it is they should do to protect themselves from the virus? What three or four things?
Do you want to take it? Should I? Sir?
Can you introduce yourself?
Yes, I'm Kay Peterson. I'm a caucus nominee. Thank you, Jerry, for the Board of Health. So a few things that are important to do are to wash your hands, ideally with soap and water, carefully, all surfaces, thumbs, warm water and soap for 20 seconds. Use hand sanitizer containing 60% alcohol if, at a minimum, if you don't have access to soap and water. Avoid touching surfaces that are high-touch. Use a tissue or a paper towel or sleeve if you need to, to avoid contaminating your hands. And what we're talking about a lot now is social distancing, and we're not doing that in this room.
No, we're not.
Right, we're not doing, not setting a good example.
Yeah, although we did it two meetings earlier today, so we're working toward it. Social distancing means keeping about six feet of distance between yourself and adjacent people. It also means not congregating with large groups like this. And the definition of large group is changing all the time. There's no, there are no data to say what constitutes too large a group, but the goal is to reduce risk as much as possible by keeping people away from each other as much as possible. Steve, would you add anything?
I have additional information that is fresh off, thrown fresh off the press that has been, some of the communication regarding this information has been precluded by the current effort it takes to actually close the schools. But at its meeting this afternoon, the Board of Health voted to ask the Council on Aging to curtail, essentially cancel, all their activities with the exception of patient outreach. The Board of Health also asked early in the week the Highway Department to take measures at the transfer station that would have the public avoid touching surfaces that are frequently touched by others as well. And certain areas of the transfer station now will not be utilized until the coast is clear.
Dr. Peterson, after our conversation on Monday night, and thank you again for your willingness to serve on the Board of Health, I went to the CDC website, and the IHE Institute for Higher Education, which essentially sets the guidelines and the protocol that people have been following, has a very active page and profile on their portion of the website that I would strongly suggest everybody take and visit. It has ongoing communication, ongoing efforts. It is the sort of the blueprint that the educational system has followed, and I would just strongly recommend to include that in all of the communications from the Board of Health.
That's IHI?
IHE.
IHE.
One other matter in terms of personal protection, and that is, it's going to be very difficult for people to do this, myself included, but try to make every effort not to bring your hands to your face or to your ears, which are the points of contact most likely to bring infection.
So the funniest thing I've seen is a meme with a person wearing a dog collar. You know those lampshades? And the dog looking at the person, right? And the dog looking at the person saying, "This is best for you."
And it's true.
Craig?
In regards to Steve's comment about the transfer station, I'll put my opinion out on that.
Okay.
And they did ask me the other day, I did reach out to the recycle committee, and I just, with the support of the Board, you are under good... To have a memo before you, we'd like to close certain areas of the transfer station. We've got high-touch areas. We'd like to put things in place up there you don't care where. I'd like to post this on certain social media out there, as well as the website. And the areas that we're looking at to quote it up until further notice is the book bin and textile bins, the swap shop, the old Mary's swap shop, and the furniture swap shop down below, as well as the returnable bottle drill that the different organizations, you know, redeem for various groups.
Do we need...
Do we need us to do it yet?
Do we need us to vote?
It's like your support, you know?
You have our support.
Okay.
Immediate, right?
Yep.
Right. And Janet?
I just wanted to mention to this one community that volunteer coordinator and I have been working and we have been communicating with the churches and many other places in the community who are gathering our resources so that if there are people who are isolated on homebound, as senior citizens or others, that they're going to need support of groceries delivered or somebody making sure that they get the things that they need, please come back to the Council on Aging as we are gathering those resources so that we can meet their needs.
So Shaun Leonard of St. Dunstan's Church reached out to all of us, and he has a coordinated effort going, and so I would encourage us to keep him informed.
I talked to him today. I think Matt Solstead from Dover Church and Peter Sancho, and I know Henry Thompson is our volunteer coordinator and also is a representative of Precious Park. So Dover Church is very supportive. And other volunteers in the community that have come to us. When we met with Board of Health, they were talking about, we talked about gathering some volunteers that may be of assistance as we need.
Right. I mean, this is a time where our community should pull together, and this evening is certainly demonstrating that we have and will continue to do so. And, you know, again, we're going to try, our website, we're making a commitment, will be updated continually with factual information from the Board of Health, from the CDC. So we encourage residents to go check out the website. Mr.?
If I may, Madam Chair, I just want to certainly thank all the staff that are here today, as well as all the other staff here in town who have done a fabulous job over the past few weeks organizing and making sure that they're there to, you know, beyond what may occur. I want to ensure folks in town, we have, our department heads are, have and are working on establishing business continuity plans to ensure that town business can continue on as much as possible as we, as we head down this path. So I just wanted to recognize their efforts as well.
Could I just add that?
And we would be remiss if we didn't recognize your leadership.
So thank you.
Thank you.
Team effort, for sure.
Team effort. Was a fantastic job on the part of the town clerk for the elections held. Went off flawlessly with not only our most recent election town caucus, so well done, very well done. And I will say this, that the business as usual comment is really well received. I think that we appreciate how hard it is and what a great job everyone's done.
So the Board of Health has a very important matter.
And thank you, John, but I'd like, I promised my wife would actually be home before 9 o'clock at night for the first time this week, so...
You're almost under the gun.
The floor is yours.
Okay. If you will, the Board, you have before you a submittal. First and foremost is I'd like to thank Dr. Joseph Musto, who has been a longtime member of the Board of Health, who acknowledged that given his employment situation where he owns a business, he did not feel he could commit to the number of hours that this job has become. And therefore, he tendered his resignation, which you have before you. Therefore, I would ask for a motion under Mass. General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, where you have the right to appoint an individual to fill a vacancy of this board. And I would request that you appoint Dr. Kay Peterson, who is also the caucus nominee for the next term.
Would you like me to make a motion now?
Madam Chair, I'm sorry if I may. So based on MGL, Chapter 41, Section 11, requires a roll call vote for the board.
Okay.
But it also stipulates, after one week's notice, shall the vacancy be filled? And in my read of the material submitted by the Board of Health, the vacancy from our current member was issued on March 10th.
Correct.
So you could vote this evening by roll call vote.
And make it effective.
To appoint effective one week from March 10th.
So we can do that.
Do you want to make that motion?
Right, so I would, thank you very much. I would like to make a motion to appoint the caucus nominee, Dr. Kay Peterson, to fill the vacancy of the Board of Selectmen as permitted.
Board of Health?
Of the Board of Health, effective, so seven days from when?
March 17th.
March 17th, 2020.
So moved?
All in?
Roll call.
Oh, roll call.
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
And?
Thank you, Dr. Peterson.
Dr. Peterson, I would like to thank you for your efforts during this time of transition. I know you have attended all the meetings, and you've been a huge asset to the Board of Health, as well as the Town of Dover. So we really thank you for taking on this role and hope you enjoy it.
She said that with a straight face, right?
I think the correct, I think the correct point is that she survives it.
I don't know. I think she might come to enjoy it.
Optimistic.
Maybe in a couple of weeks. Learning a lot about the town very much.
Madam Chairman, the next, the next item is, in order to improve the coordination between the Board of Selectmen and the town and the Board of Health, the Board requests that even though there is no provision in the town code unlike other boards where a liaison is defined, the Board of Health requests that you appoint Mr. Robert Springett as liaison to the Board of Health.
Do we need to make a formal appointment?
That's a great idea.
In perpetuity for this particular effort?
They can set a term.
Certainly for this...
Why don't we do it through the, because we make these appointments annually?
Yeah, we do it through June or something.
So why don't we just do it through June? So then I'll make a motion to appoint Robert Springett as liaison to the Board of Health through the end of fiscal year 2029, 2020?
Fiscal year, you mean? Fiscal year?
Yeah, so through June.
I just add, perhaps maybe just a stipulation at this point as it relates to the coronavirus, specifically as it relates to assist with the coronavirus.
Second.
All in favor? Okay.
And lastly, I know you have seen this, and I should have made a graphic that could be seen. Get the square. I know you've got this table, which compares the level of service that is able to be provided by the Board of Health in Dover and by the Board of Health in Sherborne. And this has been in front of you and in front of the Warren Committee for some time, some months. It relates to the simple fact that there has been no change in the staffing of the Board of Health for eons, longer than even I can remember. The difficulty, as the workload has increased even before this, we have been relying on tax write-off personnel. We've been relying on the members of the Board to fill in and actually come as active workers in the Board, in the office. And the truth of the matter is, we just don't have the hours. We also simply are not providing the service that we should to the members of the town. So I call out to you several specific facts. The Town of Dover Board of Health has one and only one employee. The other two people who work there are contract agents and are limited in the scope of what they do, not to the regular activities of the Board. And this is typical throughout all of Massachusetts, all Boards of Health, among towns, I won't say it's common among communities, above cities, but among towns. So as a result, we have a person who is working 28 hours per week. However, if there is call for that person to be active at some time other than normal business hours, she has to take commensurate time off. She's constrained. When you compare that one person in staff to Sherborne, Sherborne has a full-time person who is working more hours, 35, and a part-time person who is working 19 hours. When you do all the math, what? When you do all the math, what it comes down to is with a residency in Dover of 6,200-plus and in Sherborn, excuse me, in Sherborn, far less, 4,500. Or by household, 2,200 households in Dover and only 1,500 in Sherborn. The Board of Health in Sherborn is providing face-to-face contact to households in Sherborn for about an hour and three quarters per year on average. Obviously, many people don't go there at all, but it's, but as a metric, as a measure, an hour and three quarters. Dover is only providing 41 minutes.
Right. So my understanding is that this is already included in the budget request, right?
That's for next year.
But we can't, I think these are done by reserve fund transfers.
Yeah. So this, I mean, these personnel matters fall to the town administrator and the personnel bylaws that are established by the town. You know, I'm happy to take this request after the fact and look in to see what possibly could be done as it relates to what the Board of Health would like to do and see if the budget's there. But at this point, seeing this before me this evening, I just don't have that information at this point.
And I think, I think what you have to do is a reserve fund transfer.
If the funds are unavailable.
The Warren Committee last night assigned us to go to the Board of Selectment tonight on this matter. I'm not going to say I'm a specialist in this matter. I listened to the two committees and.
Right. I think, I think, you know, there certainly seems to be a need, but I think, I think we need to go through the proper channels and figure out if money's in the budget. And if not, whether or not we need a reserve fund.
So is this temporary?
No, well, you know.
Also in their budget.
The intent.
2021.
No, no, this is to catch up for the remainder of this year because we clearly can't continue to operate what we've been doing.
So we need to look at the reserve.
And the budget for next year will include, will incorporate.
Temporary. Right. So my, that's my, right.
The 2,800 is this year only temporary.
So the way you do this is, you know, Chris will look to see if the funds are in the budget.
Right, right, right.
If they're in the budget, and if not, we have to request a reserve fund transfer.
Yeah.
You know, clearly, right now, there's definitely a need.
Well, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we'll go, so how will this proceed?
Take it under advisement and then?
We'll check it out.
I'll just, I'll take care of it.
Right. The town administrator.
We'll check it out.
Okay, you'll let us know. And if it is approved, then we will staff up accordingly.
Okay.
One thing, if I may, it would just be helpful, Jerry, if you could just provide me with either an email or a memo detailing the request that just outlines your budget funds, how many hours your staff is presently working that you'd like to increase it to, as well as to ensure that your staff is able and willing and available to work. Just that highlights.
Other than that last statement, I think it's all covered in the.
There is a majority of that is in there, yeah.
And I talked to the employee, and actually, I talked to her several months ago in anticipation of next fiscal year and suggested to her that either we would get additional support with a second person or if she was willing, our preference, frankly, she is extremely knowledgeable, she's held that position, she knows everything that we think she needs to know inside and out in terms of the normal operation, permits and the like. And she indicated yesterday that she would be willing for this fiscal year to take this on.
Right. So if you could just cut and paste this in an email and then we will take care of it.
We can, we can.
Right.
Tell them to shake that.
Right.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you all for your efforts.
Thank you for all the work. You guys have been great.
Been terrific.
Your committee has been doing.
Yeah, yes.
It has been a joint effort. There is no two ways.
Thank you, everybody.
We're all looking to get some sleep.
Yes. Kay had a thing with that.
Very collaborative.
Yeah, you too.
Chief McGowan, sorry about the delay here.
No, no, no. Glad, well.
Are you getting old, dude?
I am.
Are you getting old? God, you know? It's hot down here. The radiator. How, Joe?
Good evening.
Good evening. Isn't it nice to get to, I get to see you in the evening rather than at five o'clock in the morning?
Anytime, anytime.
Five AM. I'm a lot of fun.
I don't know how you have so much energy all day.
Eddie. It's Eddie. Oh, Sergeant.
Sergeant.
You're up.
Okay. Good evening, thank you for having me. I have a personal matter to put forward, a recommendation, and I hope that you endorse it. Based on the retirement of Sergeant Aaron Mick back in August, he retired after 36 years or 37 years with the town. We started the process of replacing the position of sergeant. We contracted with a company hand-to-hand consulting, issued a test. Those that passed the test went on to the next phase, which was a 30-minute interview with area chiefs, followed by an interview with me, and all of the factors were placed into an equation. And I'm pleased to report that Officer Joseph Woolard came out and topped the process. Officer Woolard came to us in 2014 as a special police officer, having six years of experience with Framingham State University College, Framingham State University Police Department. Started with this in 2014, he's made full-time in 2016. And I'm asking the board to appoint him as a sergeant for the Dover Police Department effective April 1, 2020.
Time flies when you're having fun.
Sure does. It was just yesterday.
And he still has all these hair, so it must have worked out well.
I'm just tall, you can't really see it.
Take the compliment.
Thank you.
So, well, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
First of all, it seems like you went through a very robust process.
Yes.
And I certainly approve, you know, your recommendation, Mister? I forgot your name. Jeffries. It's been a long day for me.
Just like that.
Right, so Jeffries, right.
Joe, is there anyone with you tonight that you would like to introduce to us?
Oh, it's my fiancee, Jess.
Hi.
Hi, Jess.
Hi, Jess.
And is there somebody behind you?
That's Jess's mother back there, too, yeah. Sharon, and I'm sure you guys know the rest of the guys in blue behind me.
We do know the rest of the guys.
Wow. Distinguished-looking crew. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do you have any comments?
I could, no, I was gonna, I'll wrestle, but I.
That's a bad idea.
Chance, please do.
Bob, we're also setting a good example about no contact.
Oh, yeah.
Good point, good point. And could you get near Framingham, what's the?
State.
Framingham State University.
Do they allow you anywhere near the place?
Me, no.
Don't, yeah.
No, we've been coaching pretty well.
When they see, that's why he has to get a different car.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, if you would like a motion, I move to approve the recommendation of Chief McGowan to appoint Officer Joseph Woolard to the position of sergeant, effective April 1, 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
So when do you get to be the first chief in charge? You know, so isn't, you know, like, the chief in charge day when?
It rotates. It rotates. His turn will come, don't worry.
What's the rotation?
Sergeant Mayo is typically the chief in charge.
Currently, it runs in six-month rotations. So we'll get him up to speed first before we throw him in the wolves, yeah.
I'm in no rush for that. Get my feet wet first.
Oh, it's a great day. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations, and thank you all for coming this evening. Sorry about the late.
Thanks, thank you very much.
Thank you. So, so item 1.3 on the agenda was Carissa Hayden and Al Schaefer and Rich Garone were coming in regarding the citizens petition for the warrant article regarding the school start time. They sent us an email this evening and given the situation currently with the COVID-19, they have elected not to come in, they will be sending the town administrators, the Board of Selectment's office their presentation for us to review. So we thank them for sending that along. The next item of business is Mr. Warnock, and you need a reserve fund transfer. And let me guess, does this have something to do with water leaks?
With water?
Leaks?
No, it has to do with a hydrant that was hit a couple of weeks back. Yes. So we had emergency repair for it because we were leaking water in it. And it is now in the court system of the driver, which has no car insurance. So the court system's going to be seeking restitution. But in the meantime, I have bills to pay.
Yes.
For contractors and supplies and so on and so forth.
And the same driver during the same accident also hit a utility pole?
Yes. That's out of my hands.
Two utility poles?
One.
One? Okay.
Okay, so the amount we're requesting is $14,695.31?
That was the total for the damage.
Okay. So then I move to approve the reserve fund transfer in the amount of $14,695.31 to the water department?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you for all your work repairing that. I know it was a lot harder than anybody anticipated.
And colder.
And just, it seemed to be the water leak that never went away.
Mm-hmm.
Just every, I've never seen anything like that.
Well, the massive water leak was from a water main that we repaired. That's separate from the accident.
Lot of water, lot of water activity, for sure.
Right. All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Warnock. The next item of business is a discussion and vote on the space needs assessment. And Ms. O'Brien, you're going to present for it?
Thank you. So before you, you have a proposal to accept, a proposal from the firm SMMA and the work of Carol closely with this project. We had three proposals, but we're recommending SMMA. The project's scope is pretty broad, but to understand the needs of the town various departments and the administration currently located in town now, including associated staffing and storage departments. Then to analyze existing space and maximize space, unify departments, and take advantage of the existing architecture and to its maximum capacity. This was the lowest bid, which I referenced is for excellence, and came in $12,000.
And just to be clear, we're looking at the current footprint. We're not looking to expand anything. It's just trying to make sure, to look at what we need and figure out how to make things flow a little better than they currently do. And.
Yep.
And I would add, this is also related to any potential future at the Carroll Community Center to assess this building's space capacity for staff now and in the future.
And that's what I'm hoping to make sense of.
Absolutely.
So what about whitening, though? Where's that, right now, is that going to fit with this, is it going to fit in the Carroll? When you talk about taking the whole space available?
Yeah, whitening with its kind of direct correlation, as it's preliminarily been talked about at this point, seems to be a closer fit with Carroll and the work of the future OPM and the building committee. That's exactly what it's like, spring.
And right now, there are no town services in conduct of water, water.
Correct.
Well, it's thinking, most people around the story.
So, you know, I think this is a project that's well worth it. It needs to be done.
More than overdue.
Right, it's a long overdue. We have, you know, we've sort of made do and haven't changed anything. So it makes sense to bring somebody in from the outside to look at what our needs are and then look at the space and figure out the best way to shuffle departments and people and us.
Absolutely.
So I move to authorize the town administrator to execute any documents related to the space need assessment project?
Second.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. And we look forward to seeing the results of this.
We do, too.
I just add, Kate, I think it fits very, very well with everything that we've read in, to all of our boards, plans, objectives, assessments, technology assessments, space needs analysis, the scope of everything that we've laid out.
Yeah, no, it's really a problem with the work.
And what I really like about it is having an outsider coming in and making, you know, understanding how the workflow, understanding how things get done, and then making suggestions to improve the flow of work in this, within this footprint.
And there'll be meeting with all the staff, so they'll use departments, and so the staff will have a huge part as well.
And the triggering of the levels of ADA compliant, compatibility, fire protection, fire suppression? Can you say that again? Say it again?
Suppression.
I think the most important thing is work, is workflow.
Catholic schools. Those words just can't pronounce from Boston.
No, I think, I think the most important thing here is workflow.
Yes.
You know, because we've already built teams that constantly communicate with one another and this is just the next.
An extension of that, absolutely.
So I am looking forward to that.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you. We just approved it. We're done. All right. So the next item is, I tend to check these before we're done. The next item of business is item 1.6, and that's to approve the fiscal year 21 operating budget. And at our last meeting, the town administrator made a great presentation to us. And I think this evening is just the approval of the budget, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. It would be the approval. The motion that we seek from the board this evening, if you decide this evening is the right time, is to move the, to approve all of the Board of Selectment department budgets as presented to the board at this point. We don't anticipate any changes, as was described with the board and presented two weeks ago, that we've done a pretty comprehensive and thorough job of evaluating and assessing our needs. So we're comfortable in the place that it's at. So if the board would like this evening to vote on those budgets, to move those forward, that would be helpful. I just would add that we can certainly continue the dialogue if the board wanted to at this point. I was notified today that the Warren Committee has postponed their open hearing as part of the COVID-19. And we'll add that to the website, along with the other developments that we heard this evening. And that impacts, or that relates to the budget. So there's some additional time if the board would like.
So given the seriousness of the coronavirus, do we need emergency monies to put into next year's budget?
Emergency monies would likely come this year, and we could pull those from the reserve, the reserve fund at this point. I imagine as things are anticipated to escalate, that both the federal and state government will also be injecting financial resources to help communities really combat this. But at this point, based on what we know and where we are at with the virus, the reserve fund balance that we do have in town should be pretty, it should be sufficient at this point.
I think it would be a good time just to also state that we, the Board of Selectment, their administration has really taken a very hard look at the ability of cash, the ability for us to maintain a very strong free cash position. We've got an excellent balance sheet. We've got an excellent, we've got a large amount of resources at our disposal. We've been very prudent this year to maintain the cash reserves, the reserve fund transferability, emergency fund transfer, sorry, ability. So I think we're very well positioned. And in Mr. Springett's comments, in light of Mr. Springett's comments, I think it would be prudent for us to approve unless there's any additions, subtractions, or anything that we should. we should, we should add to it. I think we should approve, my recommendation, Madam Chair, that we move to approve the fiscal year 21 Board of Selectment operating budget.
So...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
One second.
The next item of business is to authorize the proposal for the appraisal of the cell tower site, and this is in connection with the AT&amp;T lease?
Correct.
Right. Is he nice for you?
Yeah. We're requiring agreement with Shepherd Associates to conduct appraisal of the cell tower located at Two Dedham Street. The fee is forty-five hundred dollars, and delivery of the appraisal will be forty-five days from receipt of the signed proposal.
And this was, I believe, Mr. Valente came to town, came to present to us, and we had a discussion about this, and this is just part of the diligence that needs to happen in connection with commencing the negotiation of the lease.
Potential negotiations, at least, on the cell tower. That's correct, yep.
Right. So are there any questions?
No.
All right. So I move to authorize the town administrator to execute any documents related to the appraisal of the cell tower site at Two Dedham Street.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 1.8 was for us to vote to lay out Stagecoach Lane as a public way, and...
We may have people that are here to comment?
Okay.
So I would, I would accept comment and then...
Okay. So we're actually going to move to postpone this item to a, to another meeting, to a next meeting, because we don't have, but if you'd like to make your comments, we can, we can listen to those.
Can you just direct us to appropriate place?
Okay, okay, right.
That's fine. Just, so we're in the middle of...
Can you identify?
My name's Stephanie Koby, this is John Koby, we live on Stagecoach.
Okay.
We are in the middle of a lawsuit with Calumet, and there's a bunch of our neighbors that are following, and we were advised by our attorney that if this passes and it becomes a public lane, that they'll be returned escrow from the town, and to try and, and stop this until our lawsuit can be settled.
Okay.
And the issues we're having is flooding basements, the house is just over three years old, and I have rotten trim on the house already. That's just a couple of the issues.
And those are attributed to the, to the layout of the road?
To the whole neighborhood.
Okay.
The whole neighborhood is, is having issues.
Yeah. I've had a neighbor replace trim on her house already. It was just under three years old also. It was rotten. And I don't know, I just, I don't think that they should receive their escrow until they fix the problems in the neighborhood.
All the houses on the side of Rocky Woods are flooding. They don't have flooding basements.
So was the Walsh's.
Yeah, that's true.
Also, what do you have to develop on the left?
All on the left, and then ours is straight ahead, and then the...
There was another one on the right also that flooded. The Walsh's house flooded.
So we were just, we were advised to, we're not sure if this is the right forum, but...
Okay.
It is, it is the right forum, yep.
Right.
And I do have engineered drawings, I don't know if we need those now, that, you know, they were supposed to be leaching, like, it's almost like a catch basin for the downspouts, and I think that's a lot of the reason why, along with the grading, when it rains now, the water runs towards the house.
Good.
So I think that's why the basements are flooded.
So I can take those materials as part of, to help inform the Board of Selectment of their decision on what path, if any, to move forward as it relates to this matter. So I can take that before you go.
Are those extra copies, or do you need...
Well, this is what I got from the town. I don't have extras. I can make copies. Do you want me to bring them to the...
You can, we'll provide you, Mona here will provide you with the best contact information to be able to supply that to the Board of Selectment.
Okay, perfect. Because, you know, on the engineered drawings, there were actually three different leaching systems, you know, stationed around the property that were never installed.
Okay.
And, you know, I imagine, I didn't look at everybody else's drawings, but it does show it on the neighborhood drawing, and like I said, what I got from the town shows the leaching systems that were finalized from the engineer.
Dr. Koby, were you the first homeowners in Stagecoach?
Mm-hmm.
And how many years have you been there?
We've been there for three, three years now.
Just over three years, yeah.
Everyone that's there are first homeowners.
Yeah. We moved in October of sixteen.
Because it's only been newly developed, right? The houses haven't been there for very long.
Right. The oldest house is like five or six years old.
Okay.
Ours is just over three. It'll be four in October.
Okay.
So what do we do as far as, do you set up another meeting and then we come to the other?
But we are going to have another meeting, right? I'm not quite sure when it's...
So there was some additional information that the board needed before they could make a decision this evening, so this item...
We have more information.
And now we have more information. So this item will be postponed until a further date, and the same notification that I imagine you received as a butters or on the location will be the same as to when the next...
Sort of by the other again?
Exactly. As to the next time that the board brings this up to determine a path forward.
But it would be very helpful for us to get copies.
These copies, yes. We'll definitely get you the copies, yeah.
Is there an established drainage system between, on the right-hand side of the house that runs down?
Well, they did put in the sediment basins, you know, for the street, but as far as the houses go, when I originally had flooding issues, instead of running it into the leaching system, you know, fixing the problem, they just ran it right out into the wetlands. Straight piped it right out there. And one of them, they put in, I don't know what, you know, they're just a little satellite half dome things that you put down where you can put it underground and further away. Well, I've got a couple of those, and my concern is if, if it rains hard enough and those fill up, the water just flows over the rain gutter, and then that's what, the water's going to flood the basement again. Because I caught mine early enough where the carpet got wet, but there's three other houses in there that were standing water. And like I said, deciding rotting in just over three years, I mean, I took a picture of it the other day, and I looked up and I said, what the hell? It's, you know, a big rock mark right on the trim, and other places it's swelling and, you know, it's like popping the cau- the putty out of where the nail holes are.
Some, some of those items may be outside of our scope.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I totally understand, yeah. But I think they should, I think it shouldn't be flooding, you know, the houses shouldn't be flooding because they're high up, they're not in the flood zone.
And, you know, for us, it's just important to, to make sure that the road layout has been done appropriately, so that, that's why those drawings would be really helpful to us.
Okay.
So thank you. Thank you for coming in.
All right. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Rob?
Right.
Can you move to postpone this?
Okay. And so officially, I need to move to postpone the layout of Stagecoach Lane for a future meeting that's undetermined right now.
So move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So item 1.9, finally, you got a break. Chris is up.
You could always just punt back over, see how Kate does on the fly.
She's good.
So this is the retrofit phase two?
Yes, yes. So Madam Chair, before you and the board, this evening is a draft scope of work as it relates to the phase two of our IT, core IT infrastructure work that's occurred over the past few months. As a reminder to you and folks at home, the phase two really focuses on connecting our network to ensure reliability, stability, and security, as well as to develop out a capital plan as it relates to our IT infrastructure to ensure that our hardware and our software are updated on a regular basis, so that folks aren't using computers that are twenty years old. And so...
Only twenty?
Those are the new ones.
So we got the DOS card.
Play Orgon Trail on them.
I had a PC XT, I have to say.
So as you'll see, it's about a forty thousand dollar price tag. The majority of that, the bulk of that cost, I should say, is related to the cost of the one-time hardware for new computers, new firewalls, new servers, and the such.
It looks like a little more cabling, too.
And more cabling as well, yep. So this is really great, and this is, you know, phase two is really what I would characterize as really the completion and the bookend of a lot of the core IT infrastructure that has happened from phase one, and as I mentioned, over the past few months. So I'm seeking your approval this evening to just authorize me to execute any documents related to signing the contract with retrofit. I will say that the scope of work has been vetted by members of the TAB, including IT professionals, to ensure it's everything that we need, and there are a few minor tweaks in here that we're going to make that don't impact the bottom line budget. But I just wanted you to be able to have the draft so you knew what you were voting on this evening.
And what's the timeline, do you think, for implementation?
For implementation, I would say forty-five days to be safe once we sign the contract.
That's it? Wow.
So the contract sits with them at this point, yes?
We're awaiting a final scope of work from them.
We didn't, we wanted to authorize Chris to go ahead and sign it, so that we didn't, if it comes in next week, we can sign it and go.
Right, well, it's, it's so needed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's one of these things we should have done yesterday.
A lot of work put into massaging phases two and four to make sure we had a...
And I think it's just going to make the quality of work so much better for all of our employees, because, you know, we struggle, employees just don't have the right tools to get their work, their job done.
Right. The, the other important piece of this is as we, particularly, not so much on the network side, that just gives us the stability in the platform to grow, so that actually saves Diana a lot of time from sort of running around and stuff and things like that. The, the, the calligraphy on the equipment as we move into standard operating system and new equipment, it's also a fair amount of training that, that comes part of it. And so that, those two things really need to go, so that we get the new equipment, people are trained on the new equipment, we have help aides, job aides, et cetera, so we can actually go. Yes?
That's correct, absolutely.
And I know there was a, a training held a couple of weeks ago, and I think that was well received, or was it a month ago?
Yeah, it was, yeah, the first kickoff of our G-suite training, and Diana, our team coordinator, has been working to develop out a curriculum from basic all the way to advanced trainings for folks that we'll offer on a recurring basis, because it's critically important as well.
Right.
And the only other last thing I would just add quickly, retrofit, you'll see as we get to a future agenda item on the look ahead, retrofit is slated to come present before the board at your meeting on April 2nd, to talk about what this phase two implementation looks like, as well as to really present the work that they've done since our engagement with them a few months back.
Right. I, I think that would be beneficial for those of us that aren't on the TAB, but don't, because I think, I, I think, I think quite a lot has been done. So, so I move to authorize the town administrator to execute any documents related to the retrofit technologies assessment, the remediation proposal?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I, I look forward to getting this done.
But they did, they did, they came in and did do one on phase one, and that was a reasonable presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it'll be similar, right? It'll be sort of what they've completed, where they stand, et cetera.
That's exactly right, yep.
Good.
And so now we have a couple of appointments, and so I move to approve the reappointment of Amy Moot, Mark, okay, I'm going to butcher this last name, Annie?
Sizik? Sizik?
Adam Zack.
Adam Zack. Thank you, Mr. Jeffries. Justine Kent, Ura-Taran, Tara Nolan, Craig Cahoon, to the Open Space Committee, all for a term ending on June 30th, 2022.
So move.
Why don't I just read them all, and then...
Do you have to go through?
Can I read them all, and then we just...
You can move everything.
Right.
Okay. And then I move to approve the reappointment of Jim Dolly as the fence viewer for the term ending June 30th, 2022. And I move to approve the reappointment of Michelle Keller to the Board of Registros for the term ending June 30th, 2022. And I move to appoint John Devine, John Gilbert, and Craig Hughes to the Tree Committee for a term ending June 30th, 2022.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would like to thank all of these for...
I need to find out what the fence viewer does.
Yeah, we all do.
And I think John might be the guy to check it out.
I have a lot of fun with former Selectman Dolly, in his capacity as the fence viewer. You actually, I do know of one situation where he actually had to go and come on the fence that was potentially encouraging weathering.
Oh.
He had to use his official...
Tales of the fence viewer.
Exactly.
So the next item is 1-1 in Selectment Updates. Can you editorialize on these? Because I, I did just want to talk a little bit about COVID-19.
Sure, yeah.
And the effort, you know, I'd really like to thank the town administrator and the Board of Selectment's office for the work that was done today to pull, to get everybody together, to make sure that information is properly flowing, to get our social media, official social media accounts up and running. And again, I encourage citizens to check out the website. It's going to be updated as we get new information. We're going to have copies of correspondence that goes out to the school community. What we're trying to make sure of is that everybody gets the same information at once. This is a very fluid situation for us. You know, we, we need to constantly evaluate what we're going to do with respect to keeping the townhouse open in connection with meetings, holding meetings in the townhouse. So I think, you know, we, we need to be thinking about that, and we're going to be looking for recommendations from the town administrator. You know, he's in constant contact with all other towns in our community, just keeping abreast of what they're doing, because from hour to hour day to day, we just don't know what's going to happen.
Well, it just helps in making decisions about what, you know.
Right.
One of the luxuries that we do have in this building and as a functioning municipal establishment is we have really nice offices, large, that are spacious.
So, but you did the...
Dr. Peterson's comment of social distancing, we, we can actually encourage that.
Well, depends on how many people you squeeze in.
We can actually still work and not physically being on top of each other.
Right.
Look, Kate, you might have to have...
On the exception.
You might, you might have to get, you would, this might have to be your technical office.
Office.
Exactly.
You know, so, so I think, you know, just, we, we have a good system, we have a lot of communication between departments, and we just, residents have to know this is a fluid situation, and we're doing our best to ensure that information is getting to everybody on a timely basis.
One voice. We want to get to one voice.
Right, right.
Yeah. I think that's hard to do.
It's very hard to do.
In situations like this, there are a lot of places where you get very valuable information. There's a lot of different constituents that lie, that rely upon their mode and their means of receiving communication that might not be up to date with others. And the one voice that we have been preaching for three years now...
Trying to get there.
Is, is really a work in progress.
I would, I would also say that we had this, we had this group getting together this afternoon, and it was really a pretty impressive, people talking about what they had worked on, what they were doing, where things were working, were weren't working, and it was, there's a lot of work that has been done in a very short period of time.
Really is.
By a small number of people. And then when you add, added in more people to it, you get, you just get different points of view, which really helps sort of shape the direction that we should be going in.
I think Chris touched upon it earlier, all along the same line is in an effort to sustain business as usual in a, in a difficult time of disruption. And the messages that I've heard and that we have tried, and my organizations that have tried to disseminate during these times are exactly that. We're here for you, we're open for business, we're going to be smart, we're going to be proactive, we're going to be listening to what we're told to do by the people who do this profession.
And if you don't feel well, stay home.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
More to come, more to come.
Yeah, this is, this is just the beginning.
Right.
I do not have any free cash update or other items.
So Chris and I did, did meet with the Railtravir, and we had a very good conversation with them. Where we left it is they're going to go back and, and talk to their group, talk to some political influencers, see what potentially the next steps are, and then get, get back to us.
Okay. So, Madam Chair, can I ask you just to provide a little background? Because it's at one point a few months back, we stepped away.
Well, we, right, and then the Friends went forward and they've gotten, you know, the MBTA has had a consistent message where they would prefer to work with the municipality rather than Friends. And, you know, the problem is the Friends can't get past, they can't move the discussion up. So I think they were going to reach out to Representative Garlic and just see what potentially some of the other avenues are that they can take. Because financially, it makes more sense for them to do this on their own.
But it's, this has been a very long
Right. But they haven't given up. And they say they still have the support and they're able to raise the funds that are needed.
But it's to get through the
But it's to get through this.
The realization of the financial reality has set in. And yet there's still a substantial appetite for the Friends and the constituents to get it done.
Yeah, well, I remind them, at town meetings, the votes, they had the votes
Right, right.
the towns behind the initiative.
You know, the town administrator has been really supportive of answering their questions. And we've been, there's been good, good communication between our office and the Friends. And we'll continue to have that communication. The, the other item is, unless you have something to report, Mr. Springett?
On the Carroll Building Committee, I think that the owner's project manager selection committee visited with four different firms that had responded to the RFQ. The interviews were earlier in the week. I think that the committee's going to make a recommendation to the board coming up at our next meeting. So
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
We've got a schedule for it.
Right. Scheduling may become a little bit challenging over the next week or so.
Can I just ask one question? It's related to the Carroll project, and it came from one of the members of the Carroll Committee project to us in the form of an email that I have also sort of reflected upon. And that's the occupants of the Carroll and how the occupants of the vendors at the Carroll are going to be affected by this slowdown. Have, do we or can we, as a board, through the town administrator, have conversations with them? For example, the school, the daycare that's in Carroll, if it's closed, which it will be closed, for a period of time, an extended period of time, that will obviously impact their ability to pay, right, their cash, their, their ability to sustain their business. Can we empower the town administrator to have those kind of conversations to see if there's anything that the town can do on their behalf if they get to that situation?
You could, yeah, you can empower me to do what, almost anything you'd like. But I think
Well, no, that was what I said.
Almost. But I think as, as you mentioned, Mr. Jeffries, I think, you know, conversations certainly need to be had with folks that occupy that building as to, as to, as to what may, what may occur there. And to at least be, at least informed as we go through the stages of
Are we talking about the temporary situation now or the longer term?
Well, I was just immediately thinking about the temporary situation. So
Right. So, so if, let's just say, if the CDC closes, it's private business, right?
Right.
If they close and obviously their revenue will
Stop.
Stop. And so there is a lot of discussion in Washington about what to do with private businesses who are affected by the shutdowns, et cetera, et cetera. So, I mean, I think, I think on this one, and I'm just, this off the top of my head, I think we would sort of pay attention to what's going on in the area from a, from a federal estate point of view. And then sort of draft policy or consider a policy based on what's going on. Yeah?
My, my theory is we should be empathetic to what's happening, what is being forced upon them. And if there's a way that we can help mitigate
Yeah, yeah, we've got to be careful.
Right, right.
I mean, we can't use taxpayer dollars to do things. So, you know, we can, I mean, you know, they're private businesses and there'll be funds set up by the state and the federal government.
Yeah, we just, I think we just have to take the lead of the federal or end or state.
Exactly.
And then on the longer term, as we, listening to the owner project managers that do in the, during the interview process, obviously as we go forward in time, it'll become part of the, part of the building committee's work to be talking to and establishing relationships with the licensees and keep them abreast of what's going on. So that they're fully informed of, to the extent that we can, what's likely to happen, knowing that we've asked the OPMs to present to the town at a future town meeting two options.
Yeah.
So it won't be certain
Right, right.
which way we'll go.
I, I think that's exactly what we should be doing. Just notifying that there will be disruption. There is currently temporary disruption. And we're, we're, we're not blind to that. We're, we are going to be proactive to whatever extent we can. And
Well, it's up to private business owners to, to seek what, what subsidies there will be by the government.
But the, the
Kind of relief there's going to be.
There will be a critical question about whether or not there should be licensees in a community
In a community building, right.
Going forward, longer
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. There, there are going to be a lot of transitional conversations
Yes.
that go from project to development to disruption to this current ongoing disruption that is just health-related disruption. So from the physical construction-related disruption to the health-related construction. I, I know they can't be seamless, but there, we should be at least aware of what's available, what can we do
And this is all part of the transition
Right.
Well, the
And what we can do and what we can't do.
Yep. The, the firms that we, we listened to, there were four, they were all, you know, they, they all have their act together in transition planning and construction disruption was well-covered. So, so once selection is made, I'm very confident that the firm will be quite capable of helping us through this process.
Thank you.
Yeah? You were there?
I listened to one and I was really impressed. So I don't know what the rest were like, but it was very impressive. And they all, they covered all these areas.
Good options for the community.
Right, very good options.
I've read all of the presented material and they are
Yeah, so you put the material and the people to get in.
Right.
They're impressive. Thank you.
Thank you.
The floor is yours.
Moving on to the next agenda item?
The next agenda item. It's been a busy day for you, busy few days.
Yeah, it's a very busy few days, yes.
So
Good thing you took that vacation.
Yeah. Thinking about maybe flights are cheap right now.
He comes back and he tells me he thought he was going to have to stay quarantined.
Down there.
I think you can get that for sixty-five bucks.
I'm sure. I'm sure.
Fall River looks pretty nice.
Yeah.
Maybe New Bedford, maybe Westport.
So we spoke about the retrofit Phase, Phase Two work as it relates to the Technology Advisory Board. The only other thing I'd add at this point is we were joined by our website project manager on Tuesday morning, came in, kind of a meet and greet, and to talk about what's been done so far and what folks can expect moving forward. We were happy to report, and I shouldn't say this, but that given the unified effort moving forward and the great response from staff and folks, that we're ahead of schedule at this point. But we are keeping our target date as the original target date. But that's a, that's a good thing to hear so far, especially on expedited timeframe, because these things typically take quite, quite some time.
Because they tend to be so much more work than you think.
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, the devil is just in the middle. Like, you look at the end product and you don't realize how many hours it took to put this in place and all the discussions that had to take place. And, you know, nothing gets, like, you have to talk about everything.
Everything, yes.
Where you place things, you know.
Colors.
Exactly, exactly. It's just, it's, I, people who've never done this, they, they just don't understand how much time this takes.
So I can add to that, that at the end of, after we closed the meeting, that two of the members of the TAB spent a great deal of time with Angela, doing a deep dive on all sorts of intricate questions about the website, how things work. Did she make it out okay?
She made it out. I think it was close to eleven o'clock or eleven thirty, but
PM or AM?
AM.
Okay.
But she made it out. And just quickly for folks, we're at, we're finalizing initial design and, and content submission. So everything from our existing site is into the new framework of the new website application. And she's presently working with staff on confirming their page, their existing page content, and then asking a whole host of really nice questions that is intended to tease out what information, what additional information we should sell on the website. So it's things like, what questions do you get typically asked by members of the public who come in? And then she'll get those, and she'll talk, and she'll look, and she'll say, well, this should be on the website, right? This is frequently asked information. So it's a nice exercise to make sure that the website is really informative. So that's, that's, that's the stage
Yeah, right. And she's a systems analyst background.
Right.
She does end to end looking at the flows through the system. So it's really
I can't, I can't wait to click on the website and not
It's running long, right?
sing, sing "Happy Birthday" twice and then it pops up. I'm just like, okay?
It's going to be, it's going to be great.
It does come up, though.
Wait. You only knew back in the old days what it was like.
With dial-up? Waiting for your connection?
Yeah. Just waiting and watching.
So that's on, that's on the IT front. Oh, I will also mention that our interview committee, made up of staff, the selectmen's representative, selectman Springett, as well as members of the TAB, has, has identified a candidate for our municipal project manager.
That's awesome.
So we're presently in, in dialogue with that individual.
Did the
And hopefully he accepts and we can finalize it. And still looking at getting, getting the individual, hopefully, and it'll be the very end of March. But still at March.
Do you have a place for this person to reside?
Carl is going to set up
Separation, social separation. He's going to be in Whitey Road.
It's March 30th. He might start from home.
Twenty-fourth is the start.
The fireside room will be the temporary, will be the temporary location. So Carl, our building superintendent, has been working on, on work and setting stuff up.
You guys will get your steps in.
We'll certainly get our steps in, yep. So individual's background is right in this wheelhouse about implementing technology projects in a municipal setting.
Oh, great.
Which is a really, a really nice thing. So if it all works out, hopefully we'll have a candidate to present to you
Well, that's exciting.
at the next meeting.
That's really exciting.
Yep. We spoke
So Mona, you were nice to this person?
Oh, by what?
Were you nice to this person?
Oh, very nice.
Mona's, Mona's half the draw.
Three quarters, three quarters.
We spoke about the OPM selection process. And in the last piece, we do have an update on Hail. And Selectman Jeffries, did you, do you want to provide an update as, as what was discussed and what the task force recommended?
Sure, sure. The task force met the other, the other evening. We took a lot of the matters that we have discussed as a board in the presentation that was made to us from Hail. We took into consideration the presentation that was made to the Warrant Committee from Hail.
Which I understand was, was a more directed presentation?
Yes.
That's correct.
Yeah. It was, it was, it was very informative. They had really done a very good job in incorporating the suggestions that we made to them at our, at the presentation they made to us. After listening to Warrant, after, after listening to the approval process, the, the acceptance of the idea from Warrant, one of the things that we had discussed was the need to actually bring the warrant article to the town. After conversation with our town moderator, with our town administrator, we determined that we do not need to have the town approve a warrant article for the process of the, for the, for the approval of the money needed to provide the valuation that the committee is asking for at town, well, prior to this town meeting. So we don't need the town approval, the town vote at town meeting to approve it, that the Board of Selectmen can authorize the town administrator to approve the request for that, for that valuation.
So the task force talked at length after, you know, certainly after meeting with the Board of Selectmen two weeks ago and a meeting with Warrant last week about really refining and reviewing what's coming before town meeting. And in that discussion, as it relates to the next steps, it was really to just, it was to be, it was empowered by the Board of Selectmen to establish a task force to investigate an opportunity here. And they're at the point where there's not, there's really nothing to present at this time. The due diligence still needs to occur. And one of the items was about appraisal and their, their existing funds available today for that effort. So their recommendation was that, again, in light of those other considerations, was that they continue to move forward with their due diligence and don't go before town meeting until they have something prepared. They took very much to heart the dialogue about the water restriction bylaw, which has since been removed, as well as the demolition delay and some of those other warrant articles about when is the right time, right, to dialogue at town meeting. So that was their recommendation. And I wanted to make sure that the board was aware of it this evening.
So we
So to take a step back, I think the reason we put this warrant article on the warrant was we weren't sure how far along the task force was going to be. And if there was something to present to town, we also thought maybe it would be a good opportunity to present what Hail, you know, the whole Hail thing. But I, I think in light of the conversation that we had at this meeting, it really confuses matters because there, no decisions have been made. I mean, this, this task force is just trying to do, do diligence. And it automatically just raises more and more and more questions when the task force has not had the opportunity to vet any of this Hail ask. Because we need additional information to make a decision. And that's what our professional service budget might
The, the, I said this at the, the Warrant Committee, probably two weeks back.
Two weeks, yeah.
So when you, so based on my experience as, on the Capital Budget Committee, there are occasions where the Board of Selectmen decide that a particular item, usually, it's a large, a large dollar item, we separate from the capital budget process and create a special warrant article. We do that so that, in our, in our view, in our judgment, the town can, can, we can explain it with a little bit more depth and, and draw attention to the article so that, you know, we honor our transparency sort of obligation. And in this particular case, I think, I think the thing that was driving me was the idea of informing. This is a potentially a project with big ramifications for the town. And as we, and I thought, as we, as we were thinking about whether or not, it's a judgment, one way or the other, whether or not we should highlight this particular item at town meeting so that we could use the opportunity so that we could use the opportunity, again, from, to inform, uh, what's going on. Because as you go down the path, you don't want to, you know, you, oh, boom, here's a, here's a really big item, uh, that nobody's heard about for X, Y, and T. So it, it is, it is, when is the right time to sort of inform the residents about a project that's going on, um, so that there's awareness, and that as you go down that path, um, you can, you can get better, um, attendance at information forums as it goes on. I understand that it's very early in the, um, in the game, really, it's actually, it's probably just two steps, two steps, two steps. Well, no, we, we've been approached, right? We've been approached, there's been a proposal, we're vetting the proposal.
Right, and the problem is, you know, we need to spend some money of our own.
Yes.
To get an independent view at what the value proposition is before any.
Yeah, it's not an argument.
Right.
There's no argument about it.
Right, before any, um, decisions can be made, and, and, you know, when the presentation that was made here, I, I think it just lent itself to more questions.
It was probably the first one they did, though.
Right.
The second one was way better.
Right, and, and I, you know, I, I, I just don't think they're ready for prime time at this point. They don't have enough information to present to the town.
There, there is a big data void that would be filled by this.
Again, I agree, but have, have we mentioned, other than at one of our meetings here, about the Hail preservation?
Yeah, the other, to address that, one of the things that the committee also recommended and, and voted and approved is a series of educational opportunities to bring both the Hail project and the Hail Ask to the town, and quite literally the town to the Hail project.
So is that something we could announce at town meeting?
That is something. We will announce both at.
Assuming that we actually have town meeting?
At the open hearing, we will, that's a very good point, Mr. Springett. Assuming we have a town meeting.
That was one of the four o'clock, four o'clock meeting things.
Exactly. So under the current assumption that we have a town meeting and an open forum, a town, a hearing, um, which, by the way, is on March sixteenth, Monday, March sixteenth.
No, it is, no, it just got postponed. It got postponed to March.
We just received notice, and it'll go up on our social media and website within the next few minutes to provide folks.
Oops. That's a great opportunity for you, Madam Chair, to announce that the Monday, March sixteenth, Warrant Committee has been postponed.
I was planning to do that.
He's very efficient, isn't he?
End of the meeting.
You're welcome.
So, so what, so what do we need to do here? Do we need to take a vote, or?
So, we don't have, we don't have a vote on the agenda, so you can't take a vote. Um, but it was up for discussion, the warrant article, it's been printed, it's on the warrant.
So it'll be withdrawn, we'll, we'll say what's going, we'll give an overview.
When, when we withdraw, it will say, you know, it's, it's not ready.
And we'll use the professional.
It's in the process of, of getting, uh, our own independent appraisal, so that we're in a position to make recommendations that work.
Sort of raises it a little bit above the horizon, right?
Exactly. It's exactly what Mr. Dwyer.
You notice that seller talk, right? I'm getting ready for the twenty-twenty.
That, I know, that was, that was about to sell.
Get quarantined down in the water. So maybe it sounds like, would you like us to put on, um, put it as an agenda item for the next meeting?
Right, that makes sense, okay.
And the last thing I just mentioned is that, uh, Bob and I were wearing the same pullover this morning. I'm disappointed that he's.
But I look red.
I'm disappointed that he's changed it, he's changed it for this meeting.
I didn't get the memo.
It would just be a bit much.
It would be over the top.
We did, I looked at it, I go.
But one day Kate and I are going to have the same shoes.
Yeah.
We're going to, we're going to show it to.
That will notice, a couple guys in blue, in blue, uh, you know, fleeces.
We're going to make sure of it.
Ladies and gentlemen at home, I apologize for the meeting just completely disintegrating into shoe conversation.
Because this is what happens when you get lightheaded and hungry.
You symptomatic?
Yeah, lightheaded and hungry.
Yeah, hungry.
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 That's all I have this evening, thank you.
So, um, thank you. And, um, I guess the next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, and that is to the approval of Chief McGowan's contract between us and the town.
Is that in executive session, or is that in?
No.
So the board voted two weeks ago in executive, um, session, and now this is just the final vote to, uh, to authorize it.
And we, you know, we, we really thank Chief McGowan for, for his service. He has been a great asset to the town. Um, he has built a very community-oriented force, which has really benefited us all.
I think that's a, I think that's a big change.
It is.
And we're all excited to have him remain in Dover for the next four years, or five years, I think.
Five years.
Five years.
Great asset to the community, for sure.
Huge asset to the community.
Plus we brought in a lot of new people.
Right, I mean, tonight, tonight, case in point.
Yeah.
Right.
There's been a, a great deal of turnover, simply due to age, and simply due to our senior officers being chosen.
Yes.
To become a sergeant, to become a chief, a, a very senior officer to accept a position at the universe, at Northeastern University, um, another retirement. So as our, as our officers have progressed through the ranks, quite literally, we've had vacancies, um, and we've, we really have a great team of public servants.
It's like, kind of like a town, you know? Demographics change.
So I'm going to move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And on a final note, um, I will remind everybody, wash your hands, stay away from people, social distance.
Bob, you can just slide over a little bit more.
Please check the website, we're going to update it regularly. This is a fluid situation. We're not sure what tomorrow brings, so keep, keep checking it. And also just a quick reminder that the open hearing will not occur on Monday as planned, it has been postponed to March the thirtieth, which I assume is a Monday, too.
No, no later than March thirtieth.
No later than March thirtieth. So thank you all, and have a good night.
You move to adjourn?
I move to adjourn the meeting, sorry about that.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's a good thing you're keeping us on.
Thank you.